And welcome to our November 19, 2020 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. This meeting is now called Order. My name is Scott Phillips and I'm the Chairman of the Board. And we're going to go through and we're going to do our roll call and we're going to acknowledge all of the members of the Board who have joined us today. The President, please say hi.
Mr. Switzer.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halupka.
Aye.
Ms. Halford.
Aye.
Wilson. I know you're out there, Ms. Wilson. Are you on mute? Yes, you're on mute. Ms. Wilson. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, here.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Perlo, I know you're on the phone line. Mr. Perlo was on a phone line. He's called in. Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Where am I? Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Halligary.
Aye.
Very good. We have a quorum. I'd ask you to join me. Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. United States of America.
Public.
And. One nation.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
Visible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
Before we. Get into our agenda, and thank you for joining me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I have the honor of introducing a new Planning Board member. You heard his name already. And that member is Mr. Derek Johnson. Mr. Johnson is a supervisor with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, and has been appointed to serve as an at-large member by the County Executive. Welcome, Mr. Johnson. We'd like you to take a moment to introduce yourself to the rest of the Board. Just a brief moment to introduce yourself to the Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Welcome to all of you all. My name is Derek Johnson. I'm originally from the eastern shore of Maryland down in Cambridge. I've been here in Baltimore area about 20 years. As Mr. Phillips says, I work for the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development and the multifamily division. I worked for Baltimore City for eight years prior to my work here at the Maryland Department of Housing. I've been on the zoning appeals board. I'm an ordained elder in my local church, and I think that's about it for right now.
Well, Mr. Johnson, welcome to the Planning Board.
All right.
All right. Mr. Davis, are there any changes to our agenda as published?
No, Mr. Chairman, there are no changes to the agenda as published.
Very good. So Board members, in your November 12 email, you received draft minutes for the November 5th, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Very good. I see nods. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion on acceptance of the minutes.
Motion.
Mr. Warren has moved for the acceptance of the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
There were several seconds. I'm going to put that on Mr. Hartman. Mr. Hartman is second to the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed have the same right. Motion carries and the meeting minutes are adopted. All right, our first agenda item is the Amendment to the Ten Year Solid Waste Plan, Office Building Recycling. This evening, we are scheduled for a vote on the Amendment to the Ten Year Solid Waste Plan, Office Building Recycling, which was introduced to this Board on October the 15th, 2020. A public hearing was then conducted on November the 5th, 2020. Staff from the Department of Public Works are here to answer any further questions that the Board might have before we take a vote. Would Mr. Keller from the Department of Public Works like to add anything further this evening? Mr. Keller, are you? Yes, Mr. Keller is with us. Anything that you'd like to add, Mr. Keller? I think Mr. Keller is on mute. We're going to have him unmuted. Okay, Mr. Uh, wait a minute, one second.
At this point.
Okay, so Mr. Keller, nothing to add at this point?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you. Our Board members, are there any outstanding questions for Mr. Keller or comments that you would like to offer? Okay. If there were no further questions, I will now entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the Solid Waste Plan, Office Building Recycling.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves the Office of Building Recycling Amendment to Baltimore County's Ten Year Solid Waste Management Plan, dated September 23rd, 2020, and recommends it be forwarded to the County Council for the appropriate actions.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Could you state your name?
Kathy Wilson.
Second by Ms. Kathy Wilson. Any questions? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, have the same right, not hearing any motion carries. Thank you. Our second item on the agenda this evening is the Staff Report for Agricultural Buildings Value Added Agricultural Uses Resolution 12-20, which was introduced to the Board on October 15th, 2020. A public hearing was then conducted on November 5th, 2020. Staff from the Department of Planning are here to answer any questions, any further questions that the Board might have before we take a vote. Would staff like to add anything further this evening?
Yes, Chairman Phillips and members of the Planning Board, I wanted to respond. This is Wally Lippincott from the Planning Staff, and I wanted to respond to Mr. Halupka's request concerning his comment about the value of agricultural economy in Baltimore County. We had it in our presentation as listed as $300 million, and that was questioned because the county's GDP is somewhere around $55 billion. I did as much research as I could, looking at the census of agriculture, impact of agricultural Maryland economy from the University of Maryland, a value-added study by the Fortify, Growing Fortify, and the Equine, a recent study in 2010. Part of the problem is these are all kinds of apples and oranges types of economic studies. But even using those in a similar methods I used in the past, as best I could come up was maybe, you know, still around 300 million, maybe 325. I think the real issue is that agriculture, like industry, is one of the greater has one of the greater metrics for what we call multiplying factor for benefits from production. In other words, you produce more jobs and types of businesses from industry and from agriculture than you do from any other types of economic activities. So that 300 million, 325 million, it mostly reflects products and livestock and those immediate surfaces, but probably doesn't reflect the greater impact. And as we said, and as Plainwood Member Warren said, the purpose of this study is to try to really develop further the economic activities in the northern part of the county while providing the benefits to its citizens. So that's our response. We pretty much come up with the same number as we did before, bearing some more thorough economic study.
Okay, thank you, Wally. Are there any other questions for Mr. Lippincott? If not, one of the things that I'd like to do this evening and Board members have an opportunity to speak, but I want to turn to our resident farmer and provide an opportunity for Mr. McGinnis to share any comments that he'd like to make on this report. If you don't mind, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Farming has been coursing in Baltimore counties for about 300 years. And I am a farmer in northern Baltimore County, and I am a fourth generation, and I'm a son and grandson with the fifth and sixth generation farmers. Farmers have always had the ability to sell their products directly from the farm. In my lifetime, I can remember selling chickens, eggs, cream, butter, sweet corn, eggs, and so on. So. And farming has changed a lot in the last, of course, the last, even last few years. 50 years ago, we were able to put into order zoning and also agriculture vision. And over 100,000 acres of Baltimore County, northern Baltimore County, are being preserved for agriculture, which provides a locally grown food source and agricultural product source for the citizens of Baltimore County. And it also was a very big help for the taxpayer of Baltimore County, who would have been paying for a tremendous amount of infrastructure and housing had it been able to just completely destroy the rural areas. Now, the problems have, as we have grown, it's become not just a simple matter of a farmer selling a few products. It has become a more value-added situation to our farming. And with this has been come problems with traffic, neighbors complaining about too much activities going on. We have things like weddings being held on farms, things that aren't directly related to farms. So the group has come up with a three-tiered system to regulate the building of agricultural buildings on farms. And we've always been able to build farms, I mean, excuse me, been able to build the buildings for various reasons. But if you build a building for a shed, for a machinery shed, there's no problem there. It doesn't really affect the general public. But the worry, the staff is worried about then this being converted to another venue where maybe a festival or many other non-farm type things are being held there. Well, they had promoted that we, for a farmer to build a building, he would have to fill out a whole lot of paperwork and tell him how big it was and what he would tend to use and so on. Well, this is not really that effective because he can build a new building for a tenant and then convert another existing building to a non-legal or a non-use that is not directly with the farm. And the county would then have to come out on a complaint, would have to come out to that farm and see if it was being legally used. And they would have to guard us on how it was. Anyway, the problem is we've set up now, which I support, a three-tier process for getting approval of agricultural buildings. And it increases as the more non-farming activities are involved. For instance, you've had additional things like wine, wineries being produced now, and a lot of other products, as I said, weddings. But a lot of things that would impact the traffic around the area and affect the neighbors. So this three-tier project would help to alleviate this. And the only problem I have is the difference between the two, the two or three, is where they have the cutoff points. For instance, as I mentioned, I don't want a farmer who builds a doghouse or a shed have to go through a whole lot of rigmarole to get this built when it's not, certainly that's what it's going to be used for. So that, those are things that we have to work out with the staff before it actually goes into existence. So that just mainly a basic thing of why we are where we are and what has caused it and what we can do to help to control this. Because as the neighbors think something's going on, they get concerned and they want to know what's going on. And I think the development of a website with the county, so when people are building, they can go, or their neighbors building something, they can go and find out what the really rules are and concerning this construction. So I think it's been a good process. About 10 years ago, I chaired a committee for value-added stuff, and it was never, was not adopted because of some complaints about people were taking advantage of a farm. Maybe it had 20 acres or 10 acres, and they put up a big fair that was not really a farming operation. So I had to see that we've moved ahead to present this now. So that's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. So I'm hearing you say that you are in support of the staff's report and recommendations to continue reviewing this situation.
That is true.
Very good. Okay, are there any other Board members that would like to comment? Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get my mute off. I'm actually very in favor of this. I've been very vocal about the fact that two-thirds of our landmass is available to everyone. So opening it up to everyone. And I would con, see, I'm a little in a different position. I'd like to see us move those things where we can actually get some use out of those. So look at those levels and have, you know, can we utilize a farm for a wedding? Can we utilize a farm as a restaurant? Can we do those things? And I think that plan that you guys put together brings that into play, and I think that's great. So, so great job.
You're right. Ms. Wilson.
I just, I should be more familiar with the report, but I'm just wondering if there is any requirement that the property in question is resided upon by the owner? Is there a residential requirement for the owner of these venues?
Mr. Lippincott, I don't recall having that, but Mr. Lippincott, can you address that?
Yes, I know. That's the kind of detail that one would work through in the actual formulation of the regulations, much like we did when we had to make adjustments for nurseries and horticultural nurseries. So for instance, if on a level two, there's a proposal to have a small winery on the site, that might be one of the conditions. It might be set in order to have a winery that doesn't have to go to a special exception, that it can only produce or allow 50 people on the site or X number of bottles of wine to be sold. And that farming still has to be the major activity. The winery would only be ancillary. Whether or not we would require someone to live on the property could be debated as well, I mean, as we know, a lot of the farmers own multiple properties and a lot of those uses, you'd want to have it on the property that really provides the most benefit in terms of scenic qualities. But again, that would be something that would be discussed and worked out at the time of actually formulating regulations.
Yeah, I would second what Wally said.
What I'm thinking of is it's a big difference of having a few hundred acres in soybeans and corn where no one lives on that and having, you know, a hundred-acre corn maze that a thousand-plus people come to at a time, but no one's living there. You know, they don't have to experience that like their neighbors do.
That's a fair point. Mr. McGinnis, you were going to make a comment.
Well, I was just going to echo what Wally said. Today, farmers don't just have one location where they're operating farms. It may be many, many locations, but I understand what Kathy is saying about the large event. And that's why the three-tier, they would have to go some review is to see whether it was adequate control, parking, and adequate access and so on. I understand that.
Mr. Phillips? Yes.
I have a question. I live close to a place called Richardson's Farm. They have a store or a restaurant, and a restaurant in the front, and they have the farm in the back that they use. So would this amendment affect those who are already doing business or because it's kind of busy there too, when you go in and out, it's a lot of traffic in and out, but would this affect them?
That's a very good question. Mr. Lippincott.
Yeah, thank you, sir. In that case, they actually have commercial zoning for that particular store. But we would, and certainly wouldn't affect the farming activity to the rear. So it would not affect the Richardson's store.
Okay.
And I guess to that point, what we're proposing would not affect any existing uses, correct? Wally, any currently zoned existing uses on farmland? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's fair. This would represent making opportunities for a greater use of the farms and to assist the farmers to be able to make more livelihood. There was a recent presentation about what's called future farms. I mean, we're really fortunate here in Baltimore County in that our extension, we provide instruction to new young farmers, and they have had a tremendous turnout for that. But one of the problems these folks have is to establish those businesses. It's expensive to start up, and there's so many limitations. So the idea is to try to get these young farmers out there and get these more businesses and more opportunity for the public to enjoy the countryside.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. McGinnis.
I'd like to echo that traditionally farms have sold wholesale and they buy repairs and sell them on retail. So they've been at a disadvantage. So the value-added situation is something that's been fairly new, but it gives them an opportunity to get some, a little more income from products that they're selling.
I think this is all. This is a great conversation. This is one that I've enjoyed because it has us rethinking this idea of farming. My sense is it will bring a younger generation back to farming because not only are we, you know, encouraging farming, but we're, in some respects, we're making it hip. So I think this is a good thing. I think this is a really good thing. Okay, any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to echo what others have been saying, I think one of the great things about Baltimore County is we have the Eardle and we have this preserved farmland. And in order for that to, I think, be maintained for generations in order to generate the kind of economic activity and revenue to not only help Baltimore County as a whole, but to help protect that rural land. I think that making farming broader, like you said, Mr. Chair, about making it more attractive to young families, new businesses, new investment, I think this is an excellent step in that direction.
Very good, very good. All right, any other comments or any questions for Mr. Lippincott? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
All right. I'll make a comment first before I make the motion. I run a farmer's market for 17 years. And Chairman Phillips, you hit it right on the nose. Young people don't want to follow in their family's footsteps of running farms. But if you make it cool where they can have events that makes it more interesting, I hear it from them all the time. So you hit it right on the head. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves the Staff Report for Agricultural Businesses. Oh, am I reading the right one? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Value-added agricultural dated September 2020 and recommends it be forwarded to the Baltimore County Council for appropriate action.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. Any questions? Any further questions? Not hearing any further questions. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed have the same right, not hearing any, the motion carries. Thank you all very much. I want to thank the staff. This has been a really great conversation. Thank all of the volunteers who participated in the discussions that got us here. Thank you, Ms. Wilson and Mr. McGinnis for being active participants in this. So we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Three.
Mr. Chair. This is Jeff. Before you move, I would just want to point out to you, Wally has indicated he's going to retire, beginning of next year. And, you know, the work he did on this project has been representative of the kind of work he's done for Baltimore County throughout his whole career. And I just want to publicly acknowledge his career contribution to ag pres, the ag industry, and Baltimore County as a whole.
We've got the chat already, you know, thank you, and we really appreciate you, Wally. I'm seeing the chats come up already. I don't know if you can hear it, but I'm going to do a round of applause.
Mr. Chair and Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Go right ahead. I'm sure there are a few folks, you know what, we don't usually do this, Wally, but Mr. McGinnis, did you have something you wanted to say to Wally?
Yes, we really appreciate Wally's effort over the years and getting harder and harder to have somebody with some agricultural knowledge to head up some of these programs. And that's what it always concerns me when I have somebody from the county coming out to approve something you're doing on a farm. They hardly know the front end of a cow from the back. So we had somebody there like Wally who had pretty good knowledge.
Had a good teacher.
Any other comments by any Board members?
I had that. I've been working closely with Wally this year during the rezoning. He was a class act, and thank you for that. You were great.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
I just want to say that Wally terrified me when we first met him with Greater Patapsco Community Association. And he referred to our, he said about our area, "Oh yes, you have a lot of speculative landowners over there." And I learned real quick what that was. Thank you, Wally.
I just want to echo those sentiments. And I just know all the presentations you've given that I've viewed here at the Planning Board have been excellent. And you're always well-prepared and speak well. So congratulations on retirement, and we'll miss you.
Thank you for that, and I enjoy listening to your music selections.
We'll keep listening.
Very good. Well, Wally, anyone else? All right, well, Wally, as I said, I want to say thank you very much. We've been through two seasons in peace together, and you've been just a class act. Your level of professionalism has been significant, so we thank you. We wish you well, and whatever the next chapter brings, we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
All right, all right, all right. So we're going to move into Landmarks Preservation. Ms. Panero is not with us this evening, so Mr. Davis will now report on the November 12th, 2020 meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the Landmarks Preservation Commission, and I just want to note the action summary that was sent to the Board for the Landmarks Preservation Commission, it was noted as Agenda Item Four, but it is actually Agenda Item Number Three. So I just wanted to note that. So at the November 12th, 2020 meeting, the LPC voted to issue five certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. They include the Davis property located at 3617 Stony Brook Road in Fieldstone, and the BTY LLC property located at 912 Adana Road in Sudbrook Park, the McMillan property located at 5167 Viaduct Avenue in Relay, the Mount Welcome Retreat, the Farmstead Barn and Slave Quarters in Setting, known as the Woo and Slosslinger property located at 3144 Granite Road in Woodstock. And finally, it's the Pot Spring Farmhouse Slave Quarters in Setting, known as the Bird property located at 2201 Pot Spring Road in Timonium.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. Are there any questions about the Landmarks Preservation Report? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, and that's recent council legislation of interest to the Board. Mr. Davis, you can fill us in.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the first item on the recent legislation is Bill 104-20, and it's a zoning regulations bill for medical cannabis and parking. And it's for the purposes of allowing a parking reduction for medical cannabis grower or medical cannabis processor under certain limited conditions infinitely related to parking. Item B is the Resolution 112-20, which is a review of a planned unit development known as Magnolia Grove Investments LLC. And it's a resolution to approve the review of a proposed general development plan to unit development in accordance with county law. Item C is Resolution 119-20, which is an approval of continuation of a state of emergency following an executive order. And this is a resolution of the County Council to approve the continuation of the state of emergency declared by the County Executive on March 13th, 2020. And finally, Item D is Resolution 122-20, which is a review of the Ruxton-Riderwood Lake Roland Area Plan. And it's a resolution of the Baltimore County Council requesting the Planning Department review and update the Ruxton-Riderwood Lake Roland Area Plan. And that's to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, so please note that this will be the board's last scheduled meeting of the 2020 calendar year. The board's next meeting is intended to be scheduled for January of 2021. Staff, uh, will contact board members with the 2021 meeting schedule, uh, and will be, and the meeting schedule will be posted on the planning board's website, uh, once it has been finalized. Um, once again, I wanna, um, congratulate and welcome Mr. Johnson to the board. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Has been moved to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed have the same right. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. I wish you all a very happy and safe holiday season. Um, stay close to home and close to your immediate family. Please be safe. Thank you.
See you next year, everybody.
See you next year.